Okay, I would like to call this unruly committee of the whole meeting to order. It is day six, uh, six P M. Uh, Andy, what you call the role?
Cobb.
Present.
Kuda.
Present.
Petrus, Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Ash. Okay, um, so we're gonna go right into legislative view. And start flipping this stuff. So we have a pretty jam packed agenda here. There are several first readings for requested for adoption today. The first one, and you know, just every one of these is a question to the, to the five of you as to whether or not you wanna ask questions or comments about it. So the first one is zero sixty-five, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance to amend certain sub paragraphs relating to appropriations and other expenditures. So this is some amendments to the, to the budget. Any questions on that? I think I did. These papers. Okay. Um, so there's ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six thousand unencumbered funds being transferred over. Cover, actually, could we ask? Let your shoes turn to join us, please. Can we move over here? Is there space?
You got a space right over here.
Yeah, there we go. So maybe you could just explain what's moved over and why.
Did anybody go through the memo?
I did.
For those that haven't, maybe just go through the memo.
spreadsheet. Would you guys get the spreadsheet too?
Yes.
So out of fund two oh six, I'm asking for a budget increase of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand dollars. We received four damages of a police cruiser last year and we got it fixed this year. We did the budget adjustment last year in like April or May, but we didn't get the cruiser fixed till this year. So we didn't encumber the money last year, so now we're asking for another increase because the money went back into the fund. And then a hundred thousand dollars, we're asking for, um, to pay confiscated funds to other law enforcement. We received the money in eight fifty-eight, we moved it to two oh six, and now we're asking to spend it to transfer their share out. And then in fund two oh seven, I'm asking for an increase of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars to purchase a new car that was, a police officer was driving and the car got damaged with him in it. So, um, the FBI, um, we asked them if we could replace the car for the police officer when he got back. So they okayed the money, we just have to have budget authority to actually spend it. And then in fund two forty-one, this is the ARPA. I'm asking to move fifty thou- five hundred thousand out of the one budgeted line item and transfer it into the capital for the garage.
Does that mean there's a contract?
No, but I think there's a twelve thousand dollar design. They wanna go look at the garage. I'm not sure where they are with it, that would probably be for Director Cleancell. But I know they were looking at it, that's the garage that we had to close down.
Right.
So I'm asking to move it so when we get the, I guess the.
Ask them.
Back, that we'll be able to go with it quickly and not have to wait. And then the two forty-four, no pack, we received, um, sponsorship for the Juneteenth celebration of thirty-five hundred dollars. So I'm asking if we could spend it.
Mayor, do you know the date of the Juneteenth?
Yes, it's the fifteenth.
Okay.
I mean, Juneteenth is not the fifteenth, but our celebration is.
It's June fifteenth and it's at.
Forest.
Forest. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's okay.
That was kind of a.
And then fund four oh two, I'm asking for a budget increase of seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ten. And this will actually use fund balance to pay.
President Kuda?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say at this point that I went back and looked at what, the last time we were reporting the unencumbered balances. So just as a reflection of that, I have a balance on twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, nineteen million, nine seventy-three, six ninety-three. So there is enough money in the budget to cover this request.
For the four oh two?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pardon my figures anyway.
Yeah, and my balance right now is ten point five million dollars as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the four oh two. Because we spent money throughout the year.
You might refer to it as general fund, unencumbered.
Yeah, that's what they usually refer to, because we're not supposed to let that go down to, you know, to. Thank you. So it's ten point five?
That's for fund four oh two.
That's for fund four oh two. As of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, it's twenty-three point six million is the general fund balance.
Thank you.
Twenty-three point six million.
Any questions?
President Kuda, um, while we're on the topic, Mr. Mayor, um, the city administrator mentioned that we might get an update tonight on the status of the parking garage. That Director Schuster said that, you know, some work might be in progress. Will we get an update tonight? Do you happen to know?
That might be up to the city, if he has an update, I'm sure he'll share it. As far as I know, I don't think there's any particular update that I'm aware of, with the exception of what Director Ledbetter is gonna provide.
Okay.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Zero sixty-six is, uh, for an agreement with Wade Trim or Starm Sewer. Design and Control. Any questions on that? Oh sixty-seven is a resolution for three cars. I understand one car is being removed, is that true?
That is correct.
And which one is that?
That is the small SUV.
Uh, for escape.
For escape, okay.
We had too many?
No. Just had to go back to the drawing table, get a different one. We'll come back to council for that. Okay. In all likelihood. All right, um, sixty-eight is, uh, allows the mayor to enter an agreement with M-Tech for the street sweeper. I know there's one that's, so sixty-nine is also for a street sweeper, one, remember, parking lots and one's just like an ordinary street sweeper. Any questions about that? I remember that from the budget, budget hearing. Seventy got moved to first reading. Uh, seventy-one, a resolution authorizing, uh, ten police hybrid Ford vehicles. Also budgeted for, and then seventy-two is kind of, and seventy-three are both companions for equipment that goes on to these ten police cars. No questions there. All right, I'm gonna go to seventy-four. Uh, this is the nine one one program, this came in a little bit late, uh, because I guess it got to the administration a little bit late. I don't believe there was any expense with this. Okay, so let's.
President Kuda?
Yes.
You skipped seventy-two, is there a reason for that?
Well, it was part of.
Oh, you mentioned them both together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just part of the equipment.
I mean, you might need to put in numbers and so it.
All right, sorry. So, uh, now I'm on seventy-six. Uh, this is National Provider Appreciation Day. Sorry, which one you want to add? No, they're both, they're both, uh, for the nine one one plan.
Seventy, no, seventy, seventy-four.
They go together.
Yeah. Okay, so first readings only. So, if you have questions, Director Ledbetter is here. This is an ordinance authorizing and approving the presentation of entertainment programs at Kane Park this year. That's oh seventy. Seventy-seven is DORA, which is, um, designated outdoor refreshment area. So this would allow businesses on Lee Road with liquor licenses to put, um, drinks in plastic cups that people would be able to walk, um, between, um, probably Cedar and Lee, and I think all the way up to Salisbury. I would tend to wanna ref- we need to have a public hearing on this. Council Maddox? Could.
Yeah.
Well, but here's the thing, could you do it before the twentieth of this month? And I say that because I, I, I'd have to ask Law Director what kind of timeline we're on here. But I think if we don't vote on this on the twentieth, it might expire. No? Paulby, Mayor?
Um, my recollection, I, I might have to refer to some things, but, uh, A.D. Anderson is here as well to shore me up on this. Um, so you would provide notice. Um, I believe there's thirty days to provide notice and then sometime between, or is it forty-five days for that?
So it's thirty day, from when, when the application was submitted to council.
Thirty days to provide notice.
Published notice that is being.
Published.
And then forty-five.
Also has to have the date of the public hearing in it.
Yeah.
And then no earlier than thirty days from the public notice?
No later than sixty.
Forty-five, I think, forty-five.
I thought it was. It's forty-five.
It might be forty-five.
Look, I thought it was thirty, forty-five, but I think the memo may say sixty.
Ah.
But, so once the notice is published, then you have that thirty to forty-five day window to vote on it.
Okay. Well, then I guess we're not in as, as big of a hurry as I thought.
Although we. They'll do that if I can, oh, we're on a date.
I was gonna say, we do have to, because we have to get it published within the next five, ten days.
And that, that's something, because I, I know your schedule is, is tight as well, and all, all three of us have stuff to attend. This is a public hearing will be in the, in the evening.
Evening.
So, eh, if you take a little bit, I don't know what, how, what your schedules look like any other day other than Mondays, but we can make that happen.
Okay.
Are, are you gonna?
Yeah, we're all in agreement.
Who does the publishing part?
I do that.
Okay, all right.
We're all in agreement that public hearings will go after five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, is there any question, are there any questions on DORA in general, though, that we wanna talk about now? Okay. Oh seventy-eight. No, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to take all actions to the surgery line, uh, for and except, uh, no pack. Uh, northeastern, sorry, I'm not gonna use, I couldn't, it's northeast, the Public Energy Council. Councilwoman Larson, for any reason, would you want this referred to your committee?
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm thinking this is the annual agreement, so it's not changed any since last year and therefore probably would not need to go back to committee.
Seems like any information would be recycled, so.
Yeah, all right. I'm comfortable with it just being where it is.
Very good.
It's, no, it's not. Yeah, I made a bit of mistake. Okay.
Because it's done over here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And I didn't even look at that sheet.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to let you know, uh, I'm gonna reach out, but we're looking still in the, the week of the twentieth for that public hearing, either Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
Just make sure we have the time.
That sounds good, thank you. Oh seventy-nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a third amendment to an agreement for the sale. Oh, this is, I'm sorry, I'm reading this like as a, this is for, um, mobility court, as is, uh, oh eighty, which is the development agreement. So, I know I have questions on this, uh, but.
Oh, we've got, um, Brian Anderson, we've got representatives from the team, we've got Director Zambt here. If there's a presentation to be made, oh, uh, Mr. Volpe is here as well. Um, if there's a presentation to be made, you can make it, but if there are just questions to be asked, you can answer them.
Do you, do you have a presentation?
A presentation, but if it's okay with council, just some introductory remarks.
Oh, please.
So maybe I'll replace. So we just wanted to, uh, just wanted to give a couple of words, uh, remarks to introduce the, uh, reintroduce the legislation and talk, go, look a little bit backwards first before moving forward. In the fall last year, the collective, we, um, had a number of concerns about the proposed housing development at two 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 eight Noble Road. Planning staff, we had something like fifty comments about the site plan and design. The planning commission, the architectural board review, had a number of concerns about the project. The public had tremendous concerns, and ultimately you council had concerns as well, which resulted in you at the time not approving the development agreement. And generally speaking, there were sort of three buckets of concern. First one was, there was a lack of engagement on the project itself. The second was, that the city wasn't engaging the larger Noble area and its challenges more globally. And then the actual design and site planning of the project. So when the development team, um, requested to be given another shot, we, the administration, felt like that was a good idea. We were supportive of that request. And we were cautiously optimistic that that would give them time to address these concerns. We believe that, um, that decision was a wise one, because that gave them and us the time to really try to get this right and get this project that's before you tonight. I just wanna run through those three areas of concern and see how they've been addressed. So project engagement, the development team has hold, held a number of meetings. They can tell you better about it, but they've, you know, they brought on local partners and they've really engaged with the community on the project itself. The Noble Road Corps overall, we committed, the administration, to leading a comprehensive planning process. And we've been holding monthly meetings on that, you know, and that included kickoff meeting and then modules. We've had three modules on topic areas, we've got three more. We're hopeful to have a draft plan in the early fall. But, you know, comprehensive planning takes time, uh, we don't wanna rush it, we wanna get it right. But that doesn't mean that we can't get those short term wins, which we're, we're looking for each and every day. Uh, and there's a bunch of other citywide initiatives that will feed into what's going on, including transportation planning, climate action planning, and hopefully an upcoming open space plan. And then project design, uh, and this is probably the, the most discreet area of, uh, that can see change. Uh, the design is exponentially improved, and I think that's an understatement. Uh, the developer attend, the development team attended the following meetings of a design review. They came to the planning commission for preliminary review on February the fourteenth. They had a preliminary review before the architectural board review on March the seventh. They came before the Board of Zoning Appeals for Variances on March the twentieth and got a unanimous five oh vote for those variances. There was one public comment and it was in favor of the project. Uh, they came before the planning commission on April the tenth, and they got a unanimous five oh vote on that. Again, one public comment, which was for the project. And then most recently, they were before the architectural board review on, uh, April the eighteenth. And so it's April the tenth, April the eighteenth, where they had another unanimous vote. So, really, they have gone, I think all of us have, you know, gone above and beyond what you could have even expected and everybody's really filling their roles here. The developer has improved the design and engaged the community. The city staff has jumped in headfirst to the comprehensive planning and is moving that along at a really accelerated pace. The planning commission reviewed the site planning impacts of the project, including parking and traffic. The ABR reviewed the design and character of the project, and the BZA reviewed any variances. So we have a process, a process that's either in our charter, in our ordinances, or we developed it, and we're, we're really following that process. So, what you have before you is actually a project that's completed that design review process, you know what it is. And so your role is actually quite narrow. It's to decide if you wanna let this specific development happen on these specific city or parcels of land. I'm sure you have questions, either from yourself or from others, and those may be about the purchase agreement slash, uh, development agreement. They might be related to the design review process, or they might be something that the developer themselves should answer. We're all here tonight, I think, to answer those questions, to hopefully get you guys in a position where you can put on this at the next meeting.
Well, thank you, Director, and, you know, open it up.
Thank you. We are getting quite a bit of concern about the traffic, either studying or analysis not done or done before the construction starts, traffic during construction, and especially on Woodview, and then afterwards. So, I wanted to ask you, in the, in the development agreement under number eight, traffic control, it does talk about the site, the developer shall provide traffic control services as required by Chief of Police and developers' sole cost and expense. So, um, that makes me think that that's gonna be a commitment of the developer, make sure that that's done and that's standard procedure for you in developments, other developments around the city.
Yes, exactly.
And then, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
I was gonna say, if you wanted any more detail about the analysis, Brian, you know, the creative department, just like, yes.
So I just, I did wanna talk about section one 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 five dot oh nine, where it talks about dealing with development plans for conditional uses. And it says in there that based on the nature of the proposed conditional uses, zoning administrator may waive certain submission requirements deemed necessary for the review and evaluation of such conditional use. That talks about a waiver being issued if that's, if it wasn't necessary for a traffic study. I'm just kind of trying to make sure the pieces all went together in that particular part of the development agreement.
So I guess, I, so there's an assessment of traffic, which is different than a traffic study.
Yes.
There's said different things in the code. People are saying traffic studies, and it doesn't necessarily facilitate or need a full traffic study.
Okay.
And we did look at the projected traffic counts for this project, um, you know, and I think fifty-two units. You know, if you do the math, we have various models, you can just look at it, but, uh, you know, the EPA has a trip generation modeling, uh, software that you can use. And so what we found based upon the metrics of this project, during rush hour, peak, peak hour, you're looking at two to three cars per minute being generated by the site. And so it's significantly less other hours of the day. So if you were to stand on a street for a minute and you realize what little traffic that actually looks and feels like, it's not, you know, most people would not consider it hugely impactful to what's already existing. So, so we felt the volume did not significantly impact one way or the other, the current conditions of the street.
There will be an increase in traffic, but not overwhelming increase. Thank you, because I know you can't control speeding, so, thank you.
Okay, Council Maddox?
I just wanted to add along those lines, just because I, I know that spot, that, there was a McDonald's there prior to that. And so significantly more traffic coming through in and out. I miss it, but if they can handle that right there, it'll definitely handle the traffic coming through that apartment building.
Any other questions? I have a few. Okay, so on page two of the agreement, uh, the development agreement, thank you. It says, uh, under number one on page two, it says the planning commission, uh, including all applicable construction documents is approved by the city engineer. I know the planning commission work is done, but we don't have a city engineer, so that, what does that mean? The consultant engineer?
So when, when they come in for building permits, there's a whole process that happens, and that part gets formed out to look at in detail by engineers.
Okay, so that's just. And on page. Four. Under number three. If, if there are cost overruns. Does that just fall on T W G? This is under revisions. Does that just fall on them? Can they, do they have the option of getting money for cost overruns from other sources? Or is it just, they have to go through with the plan as it, as it is, they? Or can they actually, let's just say if things start to get out of hand with cost, can they actually like cut back on some things? Make it work, and even though some things were in the plan, and then not do them just to save money if it starts? Because things, I know things happen during construction.
I think that's a question, Mayor, for the whole team. I mean, we, we can't cut back on what's approved by ABR planning, then we, that would be, we wouldn't be following what was proved. So, we have to build a weak minute to.
So then, so does that mean that if it, what's the amount, actually fifteen?
Yeah.
Fifteen, whatever, let's, whatever it is, I know it's in the fifteens, fifteen million. So if, if it went a little over, y- you just absorb that cost? That's what happens.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. President?
Yes.
One more thing, on, on page four, um, does that project plans cost the revision section?
Yes.
Any material changes would have to come back through for approval. Smaller, either value engineering, or if you find some miracle where construction costs somewhere are down, and you can, you know, put something towards something else, then, then maybe you go that route. But, um, any material changes would have to come back through an approval process.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Material, by the way, meaning it's sort of relevant or having a certain, uh, substance to them rather than changes.
Not material.
Fly, you know, fly by the park. The adjective, not the noun.
Right. Okay. Another page down here, I don't know why this. I don't like working without a mouse. Okay, page eight, traffic control. So. I know with, with Cedar Lee Mattelbrook, there were some. It can be disruptive, I mean, I guess all construction can be disruptive. And can we somehow anticipate some of the things that may happen? And I don't know who this question goes to, I'm looking at, I'm looking at you, but, but this may not be for you. But, you know, signage, um, uh, walkability, um, notifying the neighbors, that kind of thing. How do we stay ahead of that? And is that part of what, you, you know, our administrations work with the team, or how does that happen?
Yeah, it's a really collaborative effort between the team, the planning staff, and with the, the police department to make sure that the disruptions are as minimal as possible. But I think we've learned in recent past that, you know, getting more of the word out sooner is a, is a better thing. So we wanna improve on that, um, Mattelbrook and Top of Hill, by, uh, spreading the word as much as possible.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, additionally, I think, you know, once we, you know, we're gonna be spreading the word, should this pass, the, I think, for those people who are difficult to reach, um, and, and may want to learn more about this, they will absolutely be aware of it when site prep begins and when fences start going up around the site. they will absolutely be aware of it when site prep begins and when fences start going up around the site, preparing for construction. But then additionally, this section that you're looking at right now, one example was going on today, for, for instance, on Taylor Road, construction project on, it's a road project, or at least it impacts the road. And so some lanes were narrowed for the construction there. And a police officer was hired to help with traffic control on the site. That's sort of one of the ways that a construction site can make sure the traffic is controlled. And that, that may be the sort of thing that we're looking at here, is sort of making sure that traffic around the site as construction is occurring is safer. So that's, that's a piece of what this is here, just to further explain it.
Yeah, I think people want to know that. They want to know there's going to be noise. I mean, that's inevitable. Just, I know they don't start before seven, is that the rule? And they have to quit by?
Seven or so.
Seven, yeah, so, I mean, that's just good if people are notified ahead of time. On page, page thirteen, number twenty-two, I have a kind of general question about, it, it kind of fits into this, but not exactly. Do we, do we know, Alex, what percentage of workers are hired are union prevailing wage workers? Is there a minimum wage for non-union workers? Do you, do you have any, any kind of projection on the possible local jobs that could be created by this?
Um, off the top of my head, some places now. I do know we're required to give best efforts for XB, MB, minority-owned businesses. To be basically get the first seat at the table to work on the project. I know that's one requirement. And prevailing wage, we would only pay it if it would be union jobs, so.
Do you know what percentage are going to be falling into that?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay. Um, let's just see.
Can you let us know what that is?
Sure. I'm, I'm not even sure if I would be able to get that answer, just because I don't know, we haven't bid it out.
You can email me.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you know, this'd be good stuff to get before, you know, before this one. I don't think I have any other questions.
Do you want to clarify? The, 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 the construction portion of this has not been bid yet. So they don't know who's going to actually be doing the work yet. So finding a, a percentage of X jobs going in a particular direction, they, they will not be able to provide that information because the job hasn't been bid yet.
Correct. We, we probably won't know the answer for like four months, so as far as what percentages are. So we have to get our construction documents approved, and then we'll bid it out to contractors.
Is there something you would desire to ask people who you will be contracting out to?
That I desire to ask them?
Uh, union jobs, uh, air wages, that, that type of thing?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm sure we would. And we have a, part of our development division is, is called pre-construction. They handle all that. So it's kind of separate and distinct from what I do from some, to some extent.
Any other questions on this topic? Thank you, thank you. Um, and then, let's see. Resolution zero-eighty-one is the Cedar Lee Civ. Any questions about that? Glad they got the application in.
We're starting right now. They're going to start in a minute.
Well, it looks like it. We, we could refer this to planning and development, but we do, we have to vote. We, there's a time limit on this, right? Do, do you know what that is?
You have sixty days from the submission of the plan. But the potentially more important timing consideration is that the assessments at the end of the process, should this all move forward, have to be provided to the county by the second Monday in September, with council break and with the additional steps that are required on an interim basis, including a resolution that can't, the, the, the resolution approving the petition, which can't take effect for thirty days, the timetable's already somewhat compact. So the sooner the better, I think, is the short answer.
Do, do, do we have the sixty percent by him? Does that already happen?
That would happen after, after this happens, yeah.
Hi, Mayor.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm not aware. I'm wondering if you could let us know when the council break is? If there's a council break?
Yeah, just speaking generally.
We, uh, we usually, and we have planned to take July off.
July, okay.
And, and, Mr. President, the, the plan is submitted to the membership in the form of a petition after council sends this back, after council and the mayor send this back.
Okay.
And that's when they get the signatures and you evaluate the sixty percent and so forth.
Well, we'll keep this in committee the whole then, and just, I mean, oh.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, to the mayor's point, sooner rather than later, because they can't start gathering petitions until this is returned. So I mean, I think May twentieth is a drop dead date, return this to them for them to have time to get this done. It's gonna be like, like Director Hannah said, a tight even at that.
We certainly want this to happen. This is very good news. Zero-eighty-two is a resolution establishing supplemental process and procedures for city council. That's the legislative process that we've been talking about. And then the only second reading is Council Vice President Russell's resolution for Social Security Fairness Act. So with that, um, we are going to, um, we are going to move into executive session just for a few minutes. So I would like to entertain a motion to do that.
On what basis, Mr. President?
Uh, the appointment of a public official.
So you need a motion and a second, and a real call?
Okay.
Move that we enter into executive session, consider the act of appointment of a public official. Second.
Andy Paul.
Tom.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Patrice.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in executive session. Thank you for your patience. We're going to move on to, um, uh, Community Relations and Recreation. Talk about a piece of legislation that was created last year, a potential dog park. And Director Ledbetter, thank you for joining us. And I'll turn this over to the.
Do you want to come here, you want?
Yeah.
Do you want to do an introduction?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, um, thank you, President. Kuda, um, legislation was presented at, towards the end of last year to create a dog park within Cleveland Heights. We put together some legislation and we need to do some investigation and to probe in additional information. So I was given permission by the mayor to meet with Director of Parks and Recs, Dr. Ledbetter, to go over some initial things that we needed to put together this dog park plan so that council can see, based on the information that the law director gave me, item by item. So Director Ledbetter and I met three times. First to talk about actual proposal. And once, second, second one to actually come up with a cost analysis of what the total dog park would cost. And the third one was to visit different sites that residents and the park advisory committee board had offered up. And those are some of the backdrop to what you will be seeing here. And with Dr. Director Ledbetter will be.
I just have a batch.
Will be presented to you today, so I will turn it over to him.
Thank you. And it was fun working on this with Vice President Russell. As you know, you know, we currently allow dogs in our parks these days. An ordinance was passed last, last year for that. And so, you know, there is no opportunity for the dogs, not only the dogs, but their owners to kind of interact off-leash, because you do have to have a leash on your dog while in the park currently. So there's not really any space for dogs to do that currently. And so what we looked at was Cumberland Park. Now, of course, you know, this dog park can go anywhere in any of our parks. But, you know, we kind of looked at the open space that's currently available at Cumberland. You know, there's a lot of other amenities at Cumberland in terms of restrooms right across from the playground, if this looks familiar to you. And so we thought that this was a, a good spot and, and a good potential place to look at. There's sort of another angle to help you be a little bit more familiar with the space that we're talking about. But, you, you know, some of the benefits, and I'm sure there's a lot more benefits than this, but it enhances community engagement and again gives dog owners and the dogs themselves an opportunity to socialize with each other. And it does, you know, this is something that will not be staffed, but obviously Parks and Rec maintenance staff will monitor this regularly and ensure that it is kept up properly. And so it could potentially promote a responsible pet ownership, we hope. Uh, just some of the costs that are associated with this. The most notable is the play features, obviously, climbing features. We'll have a, potentially a water station. So in those days that it might be a little bit muddy, you have an opportunity to kind of rinse your, your dog off. We'll also have an opportunity, I'm not sure if you know, but there are water fountains these days for dogs as well as for humans, for those of you that are dog owners and, and walk your dogs. We solicited some assistance from, from engineering firm GPD on this. They have done similar dog parks locally. And the estimate that they shared with us is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, again, for identifying that water source for the play features and fencing and things of that nature. And their cost is a little over fourteen thousand dollars. Just some additional features that would go along with this. You know, there'll be tables and benches for those dog owners, waste stations, obviously. And we, we'll have an opportunity for dogs. Smaller dogs will be separated from larger dogs. We do want to avoid, you know, any conflict with the larger dogs attacking the, the smaller dogs. And we'll have signage, you know, signage with the rules. And just some common rules that you'll see, and there'll be more than this. But, you know, the dogs must be immunized and licensed, no aggressive dogs. Obviously, we want owners to clean up after, after the dogs. And so, but these are, you know, some rules that we expect owners to implement on their own. Again, this is not a staffed amenity generally. So sort of on the honor, on the honor, honor rule with dog owners when it comes to a dog park. Just some potential features that you see, you know, opportunity for dogs to climb and play. You can see in the background in the picture on the left, that's a very common feature for dogs. But that's, those are the kinds of things that you would see in this dog park. And obviously, before we, this is very preliminary. You know, obviously, there's going to be community feedback to get a good sense of their, their thoughts and their ideas for this, this amenity. But that is kind of it. I don't know if you have any questions that I might be able to answer right now.
Thank you. I have seen in some cities where they have the owners and the pets that are going to use that facility, apply for a permit, and then they have access through a card reader. And that part of the application for the permit is the dogs are vaccinated. Do you contemplate that kind of process?
You, you know, that's something that can certainly be a part of it.
I know it's more expensive, but.
It would definitely be. In, in my experience, there have been some dog parks where it's less intrusive in terms of dog owners can just come and bring their dogs. But I have seen where it's a little bit, little bit more controlled, like you mentioned. It's just a part of the discussion.
Thank you.
I really like the possibility of potentially choosing Cumberland. I just looked it up, and from the Save-A-Lot, for example, on Noble, it's just five minutes away from Top of the Hill. It's just five minutes away. And from Canterbury in Royal Heights, it's just seven minutes away. So it seems like a really smart area.
So do you, does this present any maintenance challenges for you and your staff?
Well, not necessarily maintenance challenges, but it is, you know, an additional amenity that we'll have to, to manage, yeah.
And since there's no actual staffing, you know, and I understand why. Would you envision a camera being there or anything? I know that the things, if you watch any of the Judge shows, there is dogs, you know. Some people bring it in, dogs, like, something happened and, you know.
Well, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I think the more cameras that we have surrounding our amenities, the better.
I mean, Mayor, do we have a camera like for, I mean, I know we, we have, we don't have a dog park. But I mean, if we wanted to put a camera there, I know we have cameras on order. Would that be something that?
So this is one of the reasons why, as the director mentioned, this is very preliminary.
Right.
So the selection of the site, this is a possibility. And there are several different departments that need to be included in the conversation. So, you know, planning, most notably, probably, especially considering council budgeted for a parks master plan that this has not been considered as a part of. So the parks master planning process is something that we expect to begin as well. And this will definitely be a part of that conversation, so that's a part of it. Second piece would be law enforcement. Now, we already have a plan for the expansion of our citywide surveillance network. The addition of new amenities might necessitate re-envisioning some of that and revising some of that. We can take a look at it once we get a little further down the road, away from sort of a more preliminary site selection question. Because, you know, there are other issues with the site as well, like the fact that a stream runs underneath it that can make it a challenging site. But this is a, sort of a, a good first step at envisioning what could be possible at this site, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done.
Sure.
Mr. President, I just wanted to mention also that the rules that the director mentioned, I think, you know, an honor system in terms of how people are conducting themselves would apply. On the other hand, our park rules would also be expanded to include this and would be enforceable by our, by our police force. So just as all the other park rules that we have, this wouldn't be some special exception.
I would like to thank Director Ledbetter for the information, for working with me to provide the information as well. I know the majority of our residents are looking to have a dog park. And I wait when that becomes not only a visionary, but an actual practical thing that happens in our city for the dog that was here. So thank you so much.
And there are a lot of them.
And we will be scheduling a public hearing soon for the public to weigh in on that information.
Okay, sounds good. Um, administrative services, I know Councilman Cutress has an idea that he wants to run by us.
Mr. McColl, you're the chair of the committee, would you like to?
Uh, it's your legislation, I'll, I'll defer to you, other than to say that we did, that last week we met, or?
So.
Yeah, and, uh, it's consistent with the current practice that we have been passing. And a committee recommendation was to, uh, subject to the law department approval to go ahead and, uh, recommend that this be passed by all of council.
This is the draft.
Yep, and, um, just as a reminder, so that draft was already, um, taken a look at by the law department. Um, I sent that over to them before we started talking about our legislative process. So fortunately, they've already taken a look at it. And like I mentioned previously, I see this just as, um, the first step in trying to.
Can you, can you explain what it is, because we haven't said?
So, uh, this legislation is intended to help people who are newly elected to council, but who are not yet sworn in. So this would provide notice to them of variety of upcoming meetings so that they might be able to, um, participate in those and learn as much as they can in advance of being sworn in. Um, and like I previously said, I saw, I see this as the first in a number of things that we could do to, to help newly elected folks. Um, the city of Lakewood, for example, they have an ordinance that, or I'm sorry, it's in their charter, um, that specifies, uh, some training. Um, and so I think that at this table, we had previously like talked about that. And we also talked about it in the committee, how we think that that would be a good idea. Um, but rather than folding into this legislation, the committee felt that it would be good to create a separate piece of legislation. So, um, I agreed to do some research and share that at the next administrative services meeting.
Any questions about this, and some of us previously discussed it? Okay, very good. Um. So the next step for this would be, uh, you, you're going to the law department with this?
They've already worked on the draft.
Right, so it just gets a number and you plan on putting it on the next?
Yeah, if you are willing in to, to add it to the agenda, I'd love to have it come up for first reading on the twentieth.
Not objection, I'm fine with it. Okay, um. Let's see, we got, oh, all right. Um, so, uh, filling a vacancy, oh, we did that. Why did I write this? Okay, I don't know. I, I sometimes write myself notes and don't remember why I wrote it down. Um, so, uh, council's possible economic development process. Um, does everybody have this? This is, this was, this was on our agenda from a couple of weeks ago. And, um, let me just explain what this is and then, you know, certainly we can have a discussion. So, I, I just wrote this down as a rationale. I'll read some of it. Council must have a well-defined process to use as a roadmap for considering all economic development projects that come before them. Having an agreement between council members on what the process is and how it will be used will ensure that due diligence will be performed for a preliminary and final vote cast. So we're, basically, what we're asked to do is evaluate economic development projects. That is the absolute, in Bloom's taxonomy, and pardon me for getting a little bit technical here, that is the highest order of thinking. What the things that have to go into it, identification, you have to be able to describe and explain something. You have to be able to apply it, you have to be able to analyze it, to synthesize a lot of different information, and then make a decision. A lot goes into that. My feeling is, if we have an agreement on a process, uh, we're more likely to have a, a, a good outcome. So I wrote down what I thought were ten steps that, uh, would be useful to follow. I hope everybody got a chance to look at this. But it basically, this says that, well, the administration, uh, usually introduces something like a memorandum of understanding, if not a memorandum of understanding. And that usually follows an R F P process, uh, and there's a, usually a developer produced in a project. And then, um, the legislation, um, if we approve that, the legislation, um, is referred to the planning commission and then, uh, our, our own planning committee eventually. And then we usually, and probably should, always examine the site of the proposed project. And then, uh, sometimes we can meet with members of the community who, who would be most affected by the, uh, proposed project. And then we usually talk about it in committee of the whole, um, and talk about the results of a public discussion and any thoughts we have, any questions we have. And, uh, usually staff comes in at that point and we have asked questions of them. And then council votes on, in M O U. So like, like with the T W G project, you know, the first thing we had to do was okay a contingency on a site, right? We didn't, not the project itself, which is that there would be a sale of land and then, um, at some point when the project was, had gone through all the other steps, uh, then we would vote on that. But so that the land would be given to the developer with the contingency of, uh, a development agreement being passed.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Just a clarifying question about this. What exactly is this?
My apologies, it wasn't in this packet, it was from a previous packet, I just didn't get in this one, that's.
Yeah, no problem. But, but I just specifically, I, I guess for the, for the public too, uh, what, what are we trying to solve through this too? I think that might be helpful.
Let, let me finish this up and I'll, I'll get to that. Um, so, after we sign off on an M O U, um, we council expect there to be public engagement, a resident input, periodic updates from the administration to council. Uh, i- i- if that period of time, it would probably most likely be an executive session. Um, eventually, the A B R and planning commissions meet and consider the project. And, uh, sometimes revisions are asked to be made and so forth. And then a development agreement is proposed, uh, and present, and not proposed, presented to council. And, uh, sometimes referred to planning committee, sometimes we keep it in committee of the whole. And then we usually have a couple of readings. Sometimes there are adjustments that need to be made afterwards. Um, if, my feeling was, after going through last year's, uh, T W G project, there were so many flaws, I, I really can't even count them. But I, I think part of it was just that, you know, it kind of got sprung on us. Like, we, we knew about it in November of twenty twenty-two, uh, or maybe it was December, might have been December twenty twenty-two. But there wasn't much that happened in between that and when it came back in, uh, late summer and we were asked to vote in September. And I just thought if we're all on the same page about what process we want to go through, then we won't have any surprises and the administration and the council will be working together. Uh, and we'll all kind of have a roadmap. And so it won't, I know that all development agreements are different, and I know that all developers are different, but I don't think our process, I'm talking about our council process, should be different. I think that, I think we should standardize that, so go ahead.
Uh, I want to tailor these comments because I, I, I know some of the feedback that we received in terms of working through some of our projects last year and the year prior. Uh, and, and I'll say this, I, I think a lot of what this council's issue is, isn't process related. It's understanding economic development and project development from that standpoint. Um, and I'm saying that from someone who, uh, along with Councilman Cobb, spent years in planning development, um, in the planning commission. I, I think that there's just a fundamental breakdown in terms of how the process is works or some of the things that need to be handled. And that in turn has created some miscommunication or misunderstanding with, with the staff around some of the projects. I don't think it's necessarily how the, the process is moving through council. I think it's council's understanding of how a project works from start to finish, I think, in some cases. And I'm just stating, just from the, the amount of times I've had to give clarity or feedback on some of the processes, that if you were to put a planning commissioner here for, for instance, uh, it would just be a lot clearer to them. So I think even with that process, there needs to be some type of education that, that needs to happen. Because even tonight, um, listening around the conversation around how we frame some of the questions around the T W G project, it's clear to me that this council needs some education in terms of how exactly to understand some of these contracts, when things happen, even when we hire construction workers and we hire companies to do that work. That, that, that's all in line with that process. So I think we ask a lot of questions that if we, if we educate ourselves on that full process, we wouldn't have to ask and it would solve some of this. And so, I'm not stating that the council in any way is just completely uneducated. I'm just stating that there's part of this process that I know it took me at least two years to really understand how, how we're going through it and working with the staff. So I think there needs to be some education. Um, and, and that's just, just from a, from a training standpoint. Um, there are some times where it's a process improvement issue, and then there's some times where the process is clear, but it's, it's, i- is, is in place. However, the education on how that process works isn't clear. So I, I think that this, that's what's happening in some of the case, is that there, there is a, a, a process in place, but I don't think there's a clear understanding, um, from the council as a whole about how that process works.
Well, I do, I do agree that, uh, that there are, there have been, it, there's a learning curve with this. It's not, it's a complicated process, the, the, uh, economic development process. But I think if we have a process laid out like this, where we know when the public engagements happen, when, uh, the executive sessions are going to happen and we get updated and when we can, and, and that's when we can clear up some of the part. Because that's, that's what we are doing. We're, we're constantly being educated and re-educated, um, on a project during, you know, its inception and, and that end with it, and, and when it ends with a development agreement. So, um, I think the fact that some of us may know more about how the process works than others doesn't negate the fact that we need to be on the same page as far as what we're going through. Because I think the education piece is going to, if you look at, at these ten steps, this is where the, where those things are going to take place. What happened last year was, there was no communication in between the time we signed the, the land purchase agreement, the contingent land purchase agreement, and the time when it resurfaced. And there was all of a sudden this deadline because of O F A that we had to meet. And it was like, kind of hurry up and, you know, we, we hadn't heard anything, uh, from the, uh, community engagement standpoint. There was one meeting, we didn't even know what happened. I mean, these are the kind of things that I think could, um, be easily solved if we were all on the same page. I think as far as the, the education piece goes, I think that just comes from experience, but.
I would, I would agree with that to an extent. However, I, I can tell you, by waiting to try to learn through this process, it's actually delaying some of this. Because I, I, I quite honestly and transparently, there are some questions that this council tends to ask over and over and over again on some of these projects that I know have been asked and answered. For instance, um, there, there are times where we didn't even, we weren't even clear on when a tip was used on a project. I think there's some basic things that as council members really need to educate ourselves that would help this process. And I'm not stating it just because I understand the process. I, I'm stating at some point, we, we tend to go around in circles even when we have clarifying answers. And so I think even if there's a Q R G maybe for councilmen or councilpersons to, to, to really review or something. But I, I think building that process in and, and hoping that it educates us, I, I just don't think it's the process. I think we should be educated along with whatever we're building. I, I, my, I also had a clarifying question about some of the things we're doing in terms of things like a site visit. So these are, these are things that in my expectation, I, I think all council members should be doing anyway. So I guess my question is, by putting it in this list, are we stating this is something that we're expecting as the, the staff to put together for us to do together, is expectation would do individually? I guess that, that's my question, is what this looks like.
I'm saying, these are things that we, I think the six and, and seven of us, wo- should be doing. Um, so that we, we're coming to the table as educated as we can be. Um, I walked a site with Assistant Director Anderson a week or two ago. And I don't know, I probably asked you a dozen questions, but, I mean, it was fifteen or twenty minutes, would you say? We, you know, and it was extremely valuable. I, listen, I'm not here to tell anybody, you got to go out here, you know, that's not what I want to do. I do think these are, the, I think these ten steps are things we should do together. And I think if we all feel like this is a, this is a process that we can use, I think we can, because we're going to get, we're going to get some projects, I, I, I expect soon, uh, some new projects. And I just think it would be good to have a roadmap. I felt, I have to be honest with you, I felt last year, we were very rudderless on, on that project. And I'm talking about on our end. I think there were other problems that, you know, go beyond council. But, you know, we should try to, you know, control what we can control. And I think, um, having an agreement about the steps we go through is, is important. I don't, did any, did anybody else look through this and have any, you did?
I did briefly, and I had a brief que- uh, comment, which was just on the idea of council doing this together, um, specifically with respect to site visits, just keep in mind your Open Meetings Act obligation.
Sure.
Because anytime you have multiple council people together, you start to run the risk of constituting a committee, uh, or, you know, all, you know, a majority of council, obviously, is an even bigger problem.
Great point.
I'd like to see something like this put in place. I just want, um, to say how important it's been to me with the T W G project, that we were able to attend the A B R meetings and the planning commission meetings, and hear the results of those meetings before we were asked to vote on the development itself. And that was very helpful to me, so.
And you mentioned something, I think this was on the phone, but, uh, about, uh, if those meetings were, uh, recorded.
Yes.
Mayor, did, did we ever talk to you about that? I don't remember, about having those meetings recorded, planning commission and, uh, A B R and what we would have to do.
My recollection is that they were at some point audio-recorded, but beyond that, I don't know. Not mine.
Mr. Mayor.
On my service, not mine.
All of those meetings are audio-recorded and not video-recorded through.
So are they accessible on the website?
We don't post the audio.
But you can request them.
Right. Um, and it's, it's possible that we could maybe create a podcast or something, publish them. Um, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm, that sounds like a joke, but not a joke. Um, I think the one concern that I have about, uh, Councilman Larson's comment though, is the timing of development projects. Um, most often, the specific design of a project, um, in terms of when things get signed off on, I'd be worried that we'd be killing development possibilities in this city if council always waited until those approver approvals were set. This is a very special circumstance.
Okay.
Um, and I, I would say in all likelihood, developers will walk away if council balks, um, waiting for design approvals, that kind of thing.
I, I think that's the roughest part, that, that last month or two, because, you know, if, if we would have approved, for instance, the T W G project, hoping, I'm talking about last year, hoping that somehow in planning and A B R down the road, you know, things would have improved. You know, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not so sure that would have worked. And obviously, no, that's, that's what people felt at the time. So it's, it's a difficult call, uh, for sure.
I, I want to say a couple of things. That, that was exactly my issue with the project. Had we allowed that process to take place, I absolutely one hundred percent believe that adjustments would have been made to that Noble project anyway, like every other project in the city, because of the people who sit on those boards and commissions. And so, they, they take it extremely seriously. This is what they do on a monthly basis, till to say that they wouldn't have asked those hard questions. I just, I, number one, I, I.
Well, I'm not saying that.
But I also, I, that, that goes back to what I'm, I, I want to state about this, this council. One of the things that last year, as Planning and Development Chair, that I noticed right away, is that this council assumes that information that they think should be there at the beginning actually wouldn't be provided till further down the process. And so things get delayed or we go in circles because we're expecting community feedback at the beginning when they have nothing but a PowerPoint or a picture. And so we, we're, we're moving extremely fast through a process to get things. Because we were asking for feedback from the public, right, in some cases, when project was first presented to us. Or we're, we're asking for funding or financial information sometimes that you wouldn't have till six months from out there. So I, I think, again, part of what we're, the frustration lies in is we need to understand clearly the timeline for what needs to happen when on a development project. And I think it will cut down some of this misunderstanding. Because some of what you're stating about, we, we didn't hear back for a month, well, that's part of the process in, in some cases, it wasn't like something was. It wasn't like something was secret, and I don't want the public to hear that saying, well, this administration or any of our developers just were keeping it secret. There are parts of that process that have to take place. And I think if, if we wanted updates or clarification, you do what I did, and you bring them back into a committee, and you ask for an update in the planning and development committee. But I think we are, we're missing a vital opportunity to educate ourselves again, so that when we approach these conversations at this table, there's more clarity at the beginning. Because not going into a development project without clearly understanding the timelines and when things happen, is going to leave this council to continue to be frustrated and feel like they're not getting information that they actually shouldn't have been able to see two or three months down the road. And it's triggering residents to think that they're supposed to get feedback five days after something has just been presented to the administration, to the city. And so I, I think we really need to go back to our timelines and those processes and educating ourselves on that, because it resolves a lot. Because right now, we have council members on the CIC, we have our own planning and development committee, where all these projects are coming up, and many of the people who, and this is no insult, but many of the people currently sitting in these seats do not have a clear understanding of these projects, and it is holding us up. It is. And it's causing some frustration that wouldn't be there if we educated ourselves. And so I, I'm not stating this because Councilman Cobb and I are only people that sit on planning and development, but using that lot of knowledge and understanding the timelines from the staff and what's expected from the state, the federal government in terms of our grants is critical to understanding when you're going to get certain pieces of feedback on this. And this council, again, has been frustrated in many cases because it doesn't understand that timeline, not because it's broken, they just don't understand the system.
Well, I think, I think in the very beginning of these projects, we should establish what a timeline is going to be. And so, and that, but that's one of the reasons why, one of the first things I did when I became council president was I asked Eddie to create a calendar. So one of the first things we put on was the June first, on our, on our internal council calendar, was the June first deadline for the TWG project, because I wanted everybody in January to see that's where we were headed. And then in between that, you know, what we expected and what we did get was, in this round, was some executive session updates, and there was all kinds of community engagement. I saw this process is remarkably different than last year's process. I mean, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of things that are subtle, this wasn't subtle, this is night and day. And do I believe that the, the architectural modifications would have been made like they've been made with the president, with Paul Volpe and with Alex Frazier, working on this round two? I don't. I just don't. I mean, you know, we're all entitled to our opinion. I don't think, I don't think.
They were open to making adjustments prior.
I mean, they may have been open to making adjustments, but I, I mean, this project looks just remarkably different than I think it would have looked, because ABR doesn't have to sign off on some magnificent thing, they just have to make sure that, you know, it's within zoning codes and so forth, and.
I think sometimes we minimize the work that they do, like even with that saying, only they did this. I just.
See, I'm not doing.
There's a lot of investment and work.
You're character, you're characterizing something that I'm not saying at all. I'm saying that it's not their job to make a project fancy or transformational, you know, they're just, and I think.
That's not our job either, it's council.
No, and I'm not, but I'm not saying that either. Sometimes you say things that I'm not saying, and those are two things that I am not saying. What I am saying is, this project came through a transformational metamorphosis of the kind I have not seen, and I don't think it would have happened anyway. You think maybe it would have, I don't. And I, and again, I think part of it is, the public engagement piece is one of the things that completely changed the architect's view of what needed to happen, and that didn't happen in the first round. This is not, I didn't write this as like a solution looking for a problem. I saw a problem last year, and I think it was a big problem, and I think part of it can be solved by us just agreeing to work together in an orderly way. You know, you're right, there's, 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 there's an education piece to this, and I don't think that that should be left out. I think this is also important.
Just two quick things. So in principle, I support the idea of coming up with something, but I'd want to hear from stakeholders, like folks who've served on planning commission and other folks on what they think ought to be included. I am new to council, and so I don't necessarily know what should be in there, so I'd be interested in hearing what some other folks think. But then, because it was brought up, on the topic of recording the planning commission meetings, I know that whenever I've attended, I've always learned a whole lot, and it's great that the audio is recorded. I think that whenever I've looked at recordings from other municipalities, Cleveland Heights has some of the best videos out there, and I think that we should all be really proud of that. And so I personally would be interested in learning what additional resources might be needed, so that we could ensure that we're not just publishing audio, but that we're also publishing videos for planning commission meetings. That's something that I would support, adding more resources to it if necessary, to make happen.
Okay, is everybody okay if I, Director Zamp, have I sent this to you?
You provided a hard copy, but not a electronic.
Okay, so perhaps maybe at the next meeting, or? Okay.
I just.
So you just resented it to you. If you have any comments on this, you know, because we're kind of getting down to the last few minutes here, I would love to have your feedback. All right. Any other?
President Cobb?
Well, I'll, I have some concerns about this, and I'll let the director take a look at it. I do believe we ought to bring a developer in to discuss this. I think we need to maintain our flexibility and have a discussion. And have a discussion about the process with each deal, as opposed to having something formalized that's in place, because every deal is going to be different, depending upon whether the city has gone out and requested proposals, or whether someone has approached us to purchase the property. My belief is that what happened with TWG was an outlier. Any other developer would have walked away from doing this deal because of the more than a year that has transpired because the reality is council got involved in the process. And it is not our job to be the arbiter of a design. Fortunately, in this case, the developer stuck with us, and the project has turned out to be 200% better than what was originally proposed. But were it not for these tax credits, and those tax credits being preserved, this deal would not be happening. And if it were another private developer, and there weren't these tax credits, this deal would have, would have gone, the construction costs would have, would have skyrocketed. The interest rates have changed over the year. Again, I just believe we need to be flexible, and we have a discussion on every project. This is the process, this is our expectation from the developer and from the administration.
I agree with you that all the developers and the development projects are different. I think, I think having a basic roadmap that we follow that has that kind of flexibility in it, you know, and I'm certainly not talking about anything that would restrict our ability to approve a project that was different than the one, you know, last year. But anyway, why don't we just leave it that I'd like to hear from Director Zamp, and, and do you have a developer you're thinking about that you think would be a good person to?
Not off the top of my head, but let, let me, let me give it some thought. It would be great if we had someone that's come in that's done some work, or even our, the attorney that we utilize for the real estate projects, that could tell us the practical problems with trying to follow this procedure with a development deal.
Just one, one item of caution. I, and I don't know this to be true, but I suspect that it could be, depending on the individual developer, but developers who seek to do business in Cleveland Heights potentially, may feel one way or another, depending, either pushing against something that would potentially harm their business, or pushing for something if they felt it would ingratiate them in the minds of council members. So I think the question about the attorney providing less potentially bias, and this isn't a dig on any of the developers, you know, I'm not thinking about anybody in particular, but I could see that being sort of a strange feeling of conflict, trying to explain to a legislative body what their optimal review by that legislative body should consist of. So it might, maybe a wise place to start might be either, you know, that, that attorney, or even one of the various entities, like, is it Grow America now that NBC is, or, or a ULI kind of organization? What is that, Urban Land Institute, I think is what it stands for? To try to get some insight into an efficient and effective for this council's needs process for its judgment of economic development deals and, and other deals. As a possibility, I can try to help make some of those connections between council and those entities, or I'm sure any individual council member, if you have relationships with people, you can ask for advice in any way you see fit, but you might be able to get some sort of learned advice on these particular statements.
Okay, well, with that, now, item number five on the agenda, we actually went over that in a legislative review, so there's nothing else. The whole is adjourned.